Because it showed that he connected to audio.
I saw that.
The meeting will be broadcast using Zoom and the city CTV Channel 3. Commission members may teleconference into the meeting without noticing or agenda at their teleconference location. Besides the live TV and Zoom broadcast, the live stream of the meeting may be viewed online at If you want to provide public comment, press raise hand if you're using Zoom or star nine if you're joining by phone, just unmute yourself by pressing star six. Say your name in the city you live in, you'll be allowed three minutes to address the commission regarding any item within the subject matter jurisdiction of the commission. If the power or internet goes out lasting more than 15 minutes, or if there's some event that prevents our meeting or prevents you from providing public comment, then the meeting will be adjourned. Any items noticed as public hearings will be rescheduled to the next regular commission meeting. Any other agenda items the commission has not taken action on will be placed on a future agenda. Now, a meeting of the City of Calabasas Commission.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the December 15, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission of the City of Calabasas. I, the meeting is called to order, and I will note for the record that we have a full contingent this, this evening. All commissioners are present. Um. As a welcome back, Commissioner Mueller, will you lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please?
I will be happy to. And over hard, again, I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is
which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Uh, okay, uh, do we have any changes to the agenda this evening?
Good evening, Chair. Uh, we do not have any changes to the agenda.
All right.
No approval of the agenda, Dennis Washburn.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of approving the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Hearing no opposition, uh, the agenda is approved unanimously. Uh. Commissioners, do we have any announcements or introductions? Commissioner Washburn.
I want to acknowledge that last evening at City Hall, we had an in-person meeting of the city council and the community. And we had a changing of the guard, a peaceful transfer of power. Our new mayor is David Shapiro, our new mayor pro tem is Alicia Weintraub. And we honored Mary Sue Mauer a second time because she was honored at the State of the City address, and she got even more swag at the meeting last night. So congratulations to those and Ed Albrecht was installed as a council member. So congratulations to Ed and Peter and Alicia continue, as you well know. So congratulations to them. And now we go into 2023 with a full complement of elected officials in Calabasas.
Terrific. Any other announcements or introductions? Okay.
Let me make one more.
Yes.
This morning, the Valley Economic Alliance had their annual board meeting at our Founder's Hall, and we had a contingency from all over the San Fernando Valley and a number of elected and appointed officials from various places in the valley, including our new Assemblywoman, Jackie Irwin, and we had mayors and vice mayors from all five of the cities, or at least somebody from Burbank, Glendale, San Fernando, Calabasas, and Los Angeles. And we heard the farewell pronouncement of Eric Garcetti, the outgoing mayor of the City of Los Angeles. So it was quite a nice thing to have launching the 2023 and upcoming, you know, elected office, you know, terms of service right here in Calabasas at our Founder's Hall. Quite a nice event.
Great. Thank you very much. Okay, moving on, I, we are on to oral communications, uh, public comment. This is the portion of the meeting for citizens wishing to address the commission on matters that are not on the agenda. Do we have anyone in the audience now? If there's anyone who wants to address something that is not on the agenda, please click on raise your hand. Michael, do we have anyone?
We have people in the audience, but no one has raised their hand.
Okay. All right, then let's move on to consent items. We have approval of the minutes of October 6th of 2022. We have any, any corrections or do we have a motion to approve? Commissioner Harrison?
Oh, thank you. I have a question on the middle of the first page where it says, uh, Michael Dyer, Senior Public Consultant. Um, I mean, he used to be our interim emergency manager, but I don't know. That sounds like a general title. Is there something missing there or?
No, I did double check on our, on our website and our internet, and that is his official title.
A senior public consultant.
Public, yes.
Not even public safety consultant?
That, that, that's what we have for him.
Okay.
All right, so do we have a motion to approve?
So move.
And a second, thank you, all in favor of approving the minutes of the meeting of October 6th, 2022, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Uh. With a vote of five, nothing, uh, the, the minutes are approved. Okay, let's move on to public hearing item number two. This is the request for a site plan review and an oak tree permit to construct a 1,077 square foot addition to the first and second floors in an existing 2,696 square foot two-story residence located within the protected zone of oak trees at 3821 Eddingham Avenue within the residential single-family zoning district. The project is exempt from environmental review in accordance with section 15061B3 and section 15301 of the California SECO guidelines. I, who do we have presenting this evening?
Thank you, Chair. I'll be presenting, so I will go ahead and share my screen.
Thank you.
Okay, good evening, commissioners. I would like to start out by mentioning that this project was noticed to all property owners within 500 feet of the subject site. A public hearing notice was also posted on the city's website, as well as throughout the city at all required locations. Staff did receive just one question from a neighboring property owner looking for information on how to access the public hearing notice online, but no concerns about the project were expressed. I also do want to mention that there is an error on page six of the staff report within the technical appendix. The pervious surface percentages listed within the technical appendix, those numbers should actually be 74% existing pervious and 70% proposed pervious. So that is a typo in the staff report. Those numbers should not be carried over into the resolution, so it should just be that one location in the staff report that needs to be corrected. Okay, so before you today, again, as a request for a site planner view and an oak tree permit to construct a 1,077 square foot addition to the first and second floors of an existing 2,696 square foot two-story residence that's located within the protected zone of oak trees at 3821 Eddingham Avenue within the residential single-family zoning district. And we, here we have a project location map. Again, the subject site is what is within the RS zoning district. It's also located within the greater Mulwood area of the city, and it's located at the intersection of Eddingham Avenue and of Darden Street. The site is surrounded by single-family residences to the north and to the east of the subject site, and it's also surrounded by undeveloped HM-zoned property to the south and west. And I also want to point out here that shown in yellow is the scenic corridor overlay zone due to the proximity from Mulholland Highway, which is a designated scenic corridor, and the subject site is located outside of that scenic corridor overlay. And here we have a more close-up view of the project site. So the surrounding neighborhood is made up of one- and two-story single-family residences that range in size from approximately 2,082 square feet to 3,386 square feet with floor area ratios that range from 0.12 to 0.29. With the proposed addition, the total square footage of the house will be 3,773 square feet with a proposed floor area ratio of 0.19. So the subject site is a corner lot that's currently developed with an existing two-story single-family residence, exterior improvements such as a sports court, pool, patio cover, landscape, and hardscape. The site is a primarily flat lot that slopes upwards at the rear of the lot here. Um, and that slope is, um, is full of oak trees in this area here, and there are also oak trees present on the site in this northernmost front corner of the subject site right here at that intersection. Okay, here we have a photograph of the subject site, and the residence is a two-stories, two-story 2,696 square foot single-family residence that currently has a beige stucco exterior. And the proposed project includes the construction of a 1,077 square foot addition to the first and second floor, the existing two-story single-family residence. The project will encroach into the protected zone of four coast live oak trees, and all trees are to be protected in place. Calabasas Municipal Code Section 17.62.020 and Section 17.32.010 require this project to be reviewed by the planning commission. Here we have the proposed site plan. We do want to mention that this is a partial site plan. I've cropped it to just show the developed areas of the site. Shown off screen here is that undeveloped area of oak trees at the rear of the lot. So shown here in yellow is the area of the first floor addition. Uh, and then there's also an area of first floor addition, the side yard right here. And then shown in blue are the areas of two-story addition, so at the rear of the residence along the side of the residence right here. So the proposed areas of addition do meet all development standards in regards to setbacks, height limits, pervious surfaces, and site coverage. Here we have the proposed floor plans. You can see at the front of the residence here, we have an area of addition in the northernmost corner of the property, and then an area of addition within that side yard here, continuing that line of the existing garage space right here to extend the kitchen area. And on the second floor plan here, you can also see that area of second story addition in the side yard and along the rear. Can also see with these new walls outlined here that they're just extending two windows that are at the front of the house, which I'll show in the elevation, just next slide. Can see these are those two windows I was mentioning that they're just extending a little bit to add a little bit of articulation to the second floor. So the proposed project also involved an exterior remodel, uh, including new gray exterior siding, as well as precast stone detail, wood trim, and an asphalt shingle roof. We have the southeast and northwest elevation, so this is the subject site as viewed from the sides. And in regards to design, the architectural review panel reviewed the proposed project on January 28th, 2022. The subject site is not located within a designated scenic corridor, and there are no city imposed architectural design standards for the neighborhood. And the architecture review panel found that the proposed project is compatible with the aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhood, and they recommended approval of the project to the planning commission. I also want to note that the ARP's recommendation of approval was with an added suggestion of increasing the size of architectural elements on the front elevation in order to match the scale of the house. I'm just going to go back to on the elevations, you can see these eaves right here. So this is the front of the house. It used to be two feet based on the ARP suggestion, they extended that eave three feet. So you can see this is three feet right here, three feet right here, and three feet here. So that would be looking at the front elevation like above the garage, above the office area here. Again, based on the ARP suggestion, they also added this wood beam over the office area at the front corner of the house, and that was so that this new area of addition would match what they're proposing above the garage and above the second story window. And as you can see, homes in the surrounding neighborhood are varied in regards to architectural style and colors and materials. So this home is located along Eddingham to the north. This home is located along Eddingham to the south, and this home is located across the street on the opposite side of Eddingham from the subject site. We have our home comparison, so this table shows homes in the immediate vicinity, which do range in size between 2,135 square feet to 3,386 square feet. The proposed size of the residence with the additions will be 3,773 square feet, which is slightly above the range of homes in the vicinity. However, the lot size is also one of the larger lots in the area. So because of that, the proposed floor area ratio will be 0.19, just right in line with the average floor area ratio for the vicinity, which is 0.19. And then in regards to oak trees, we have our oak tree location map here. Can see that there are other oak trees on the subject site at the rear of the property, which are not being encroached upon with the proposed project. And we have these four in the northernmost corner right here. So these are oak trees, three and four, which are smaller oak trees, and then oak tree numbers one and two are the larger oak trees. So there are eight coast live oak trees located on or adjacent to the project site in total. Four of those oak trees are located within the front yard area within the proposed area of construction activity. Tree numbers three and four are not anticipated to be impacted, and tree numbers one and two are expected to have no long-term damage as a result of the proposed minor encroachment into the root zone of those two trees. All of the encroached upon oak trees are expected to survive with adherence to the arborist recommendations, which are included in the resolution. This condition numbers 15 and 16 of planning commission resolution number 2022-747. Uh, I will move on to findings. So the findings for a site plan review, the proposed site development is compatible in design, appearance, and scale with the existing uses, development, structures, and landscaping for the surrounding area. And the site is adequate in size and shape to accommodate the proposed development features. And for an oak tree permit, the request to encroach within the protected zone of an oak tree or scrub oak habitat is warranted to enable reasonable and conforming use of the property, and encroachments can be performed with no significant long-term impact to the oak trees. So with that, staff concludes that the proposed project will not alter the existing single-family use of the subject site, which isn't allowed use in the RS zoning district, that the proposed project meets all required development standards, that the proposed project is compatible in design, appearance, and scale with surrounding uses. The architecture review panel recommended approval of the proposed project. And the encroachment into the protected zone of four coast live oak trees is warranted, but all four trees expected to survive. The project is exempt from SECO review, and the proposed project meets all required findings for a site planner view as well as for an oak tree permit. So with that, staff recommends that the commission adopt resolution number 2022-747, approving file number SPR-2021-022 and OTP-2022-001. Thank you, and I am available for questions. I do believe that we also have the project architect and the property owner here as well to answer any questions you may have.
Great, thank you very much. And Jacqueline, thank, thank you for making that, uh, that correction to the report at the outset. It saved me, saved me asking some confused, confused question.
Thank you.
And before I ask for, uh, questions from the commissioners, I, the resolution, uh, at page six, I don't want to forget to do this, page six, paragraph number one, but the, the, the first, the first actual paragraph, uh, it says there are seven, and then it, it's got in parentheses eight. I believe that should be eight.
You are correct.
So that, that should, that should be corrected. Okay, um, do we have any questions from any commissioners before I open the public hearing? Uh, Commissioner Harrison?
Well, thank you. I, I, I think this is just incredible, wonderful architecture and the layout, and the siding looks great and, but my only question is where will they put the solar panels? Just curious.
The solar panels?
Yes. We all have to put solar panels on when we add, improve construction. I had to do it, so I assume they have to.
Um, I'll have to check with our building and safety division on that, but I think what you may be referring to, um, on your house, you had constructed an ADU, right?
Right.
I believe that in that case, it's for any new residential units. So in your case, that was considered a new unit. Um, in this case, because they're not creating any new units as a result of the proposed construction, um, that wouldn't be required.
Interesting.
Currently required, it may change with future building codes because we do have an update coming up, but I believe currently it's only for, only for new residential units.
I see. Okay, so it wouldn't apply to the second one either, the product they left for the C11?
Right, unless they were doing that as an ADU, or again, unless there's any change to the building code as of the 2022 codes, as of the 2019 codes, as far as I'm aware of, um, that's not a requirement at the moment.
Okay, no, okay, thanks for answering that. I, I do think this is really wonderful, so, thank you.
All right, we have any other questions? Commissioner Washburn?
Uh, one on the oak tree, um, assessment, and I wanted to just pass along the comment that, um, these folks are a neighbor of mine just a block away, and I visited the, the site, and I looked at the materials palette that's being proposed. Michael, um, there is room for a solar panel and, um, installation because it'd be relatively easy on the asphalt tiles that they are planning to use. They're fireproof, obviously. You know, there's no difficulty in putting them onto a, a roof that's of that nature. It could be that with your comment, the owner might consider that's an appropriate thing to deal with, but it's not a requirement from my understanding. Second thing is that, um, um, in visiting the site today, um, I can tell you that, uh, this owner is, um, you know, I'll use a humorous term, they're a victim of the squirrels that live in our neighborhood because they've repopulated the entire Mulwood area with oak trees with all their activity over the past 50 years. And many of the trees on this property and my property are the result of basically squirrels making a home for their future and their future generations. So, um, the only question I have about the trees themselves is that, um, the ones that are on, um, Dardine Street, the corner, and this is at, at the juncture of a traffic circle on Eddingham and Dardine. There, there is such substantial growth that the trees that are right on the, you know, the, the wall next to the sidewalk and the parkway, um, are so robust that they have virtually covered the street. So as the folks are making their plans, it might be worthwhile to look at what the appropriate pruning and, you know, heading back onto the property of the oak trees that, as I said, are quite robust in order to make sure that they aren't an obstruction to any traffic that's on Dardine, even though they're on a cul-de-sac essentially. And this, and the second observation about the oak trees, one of the oak trees on the front side, you know, at the, basically at the, um, intersection of Dardine and Eddingham in the front yard, uh, looks to have been severely impacted, um, and might in fact be worthy of either heavy pruning or removal if it's a subject of, um, you know, the shot hole borer or any of the other nasty borers that we have in the Santa Monica Mountains. It might be worth taking a look again to see if the health of that tree is as the, um, arborists have indicated that there's nothing wrong with them. One of them is clearly under great stress, so that also might make their construction job a little easier because it's the one that's right up next to where the front yard additions are looking to be made. I have no complaint on any of it, but, um, you know, it just makes sense while they're doing such a significant modification of the property, it would be worthwhile making sure that the trees, um, you know, are not going to be in the way or an obstruction ultimately to, uh, the additions to the house.
All right, thank you, and I do see you raised hand, Commissioner Mueller, but before, uh, uh, Jacqueline, can you, uh, take down your share screen? At the moment, thank you. Commissioner Mueller?
Oh, yes, um, Jacqueline, on the tree report, exhibit E, there is a comment in the first line that, that one of the oak trees is large enough to be called a heritage oak, which seemed like a kind of an odd statement to me. Is that not an official heritage oak because of its species or age or some other reason?
So by virtue of just the, um, the circumference of the tree alone, it, it is considered a heritage oak tree, but then I believe there was some speculation in the sentences after that, that, um, I think based on our definition of a heritage oak tree, it's one tree that shares a root system. So they were, I believe what their arborist was saying is that it could be a cluster of smaller trees that actually had separate root systems, um, without seeing the root systems, there wasn't a way to confirm that. So for the purposes of the report, I believe it was being considered a heritage tree.
Oh, okay, that heritage jokes.
Your question, John, again.
Yeah, the heritage jokes have, have their own special protections, and I just, that was a phrase that I'd never seen before in a report, large enough to be called a heritage oak.
I think it was, it's, um, not an arborist, but I believe it was because it was a multi-trunk tree with the trunk so far enough apart that it was possible that they had separate root systems instead of sharing a root system.
And but it's not disturbed in any of it.
Right, right, the, the root zone was the same in either case, and the, um, encroachment into the root zone was the, the same.
And John, based on my personal experience on my lot, which is just a block away, um, it is a multi-trunk tree, there's probably at least five, maybe seven trunks, some of which are, you know, with probably 20 inches across. But, um, the tree and its location makes them quite robust, and if you drive underneath them, like I said, it's, um, it's probably something worthwhile, uh, that the owner might consider, uh, doing some, you know, I guess, um, appropriate pruning. And I don't think there's any heritage, uh, quality to any of the individual trunks, but ultimately they look like a heritage oak because they're, they are so robust.
Thank you.
All right. I, any other?
If I could just, yeah, jump in here, sorry. Um, and sorry that my, my, uh, what's it called? My camera's not working. Um, Commissioner Washburn, you, you just said that you, uh, lived the block over. Um, I think there, there's a requirement that if you live within 500 feet of a project that you should recuse yourself.
I probably, I probably will, but it helps at least
Okay.
the analysis, I will recuse myself on the vote.
Okay, thank you. Um, and, and moving forward, I think it's, it's best, um, as, as policy to, um, include it, be, uh, announce the reason for the recusal and do it, um, be at the beginning of the, uh, the presentation or before the presentation, but, um.
And I didn't get a notice, so, um, I should have identified the fact that I'm probably at, you know, 400 to 500 feet away, but within the zone that, uh, requires the reporting.
But, but wouldn't he be allowed to speak anyway, uh, at the?
As a member of the public is typically how we've done it in the past, I believe. Um, but that would involve through public comment and, and not as a, a public, uh, sorry, not as a commissioner, but, um, saying, you know, as a neighbor.
I appreciate the notice, thank you.
All right, so I, I want to make sure that we're doing the right thing here. Uh, are you saying that, that Commissioner Washburn should, that that recusal should come now, or can it wait until the vote?
At this point, it can wait until the vote.
Okay, terrific, thank you very much. All right, uh, let's go ahead and open the public hearing. Uh, do we have, and if you want to speak on this item, please raise your hand. Michael, do you see anyone with a raised hand?
I don't see anyone with the raised hand. I do believe I see the owner and possibly the architect, but no one has raised their hand.
Yes, then I'm. They're both here.
Okay, I'm going to assume since they are not raising their hands, that I, they are here to answer questions if any commissioners have questions of them. So I'm going to ask before I close the hearing, the public hearing, I, do any of the commissioners have questions of the owner, uh, or the applicant? The owner or the architect? Nope. And having no raised hands, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing.
Had one.
Uh, actually. Uh, actually.
Have one.
Okay, um, of the of the architect or of the owner?
The owner.
Okay, I can we get the owner, it it, can I ask the owner to to raise your hand, please, and uh, Michael, can you admit them, please?
Yep. All right, the owner is allowed to talk.
All right, uh, can you please, I, I believe that that is Mr. Silverstein, can you please state your name uh and city of city of residence for the record?
Good evening to everyone, my name is Doug Silverstein, and uh not, I'm in a meeting, Michael, and not surprisingly, my city of residence is Calabasas.
I would hope so, under the circumstances. Okay, um, if I may, John, before before you ask your question, I just want, while I have you, um, have you reviewed the conditions of approval? Uh, and if so, are you prepared to comply with those conditions if uh if this project is moved forward?
That is an affirmative to both questions.
Okay, terrific. Uh, Commissioner Mueller?
Yes, thank you. Uh, thank you, Mr. Silverstein, for being available. And this really isn't a question, well, maybe part partially a question and partially an observation. I love your property, I'm I'm within a mile of it, and I walk by it all the time, and I just think that it's a, it's a, you you keep the house up so well. Dennis is right, that the the agrofolia is wonderful, especially that which is up on the slope, so it's a, it's a cool property. You must love the privacy. Um, and then my only observation is that while you're going to be doing all this work, perhaps you have in mind, um, and maybe you don't even, maybe you haven't even noticed this, the 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 west wall, I guess, I I think it faces west. The the wall that faces uh Mallon Highway is kind of fallen down in places, and I know that's not the subject of this hearing, but in in case, if you hadn't noticed it, there are some sort of significant gaps showing up, and since you're going to be doing a lot of work, then maybe something that you'd want to take a look at, because it's just such a great, great house and great property. That's all.
I appreciate your comments, uh, I I am aware of that issue, uh, which ironically is the result of the tremendous growth of the oak tree that is right next to it in the rear of the property that is not impacted by this particular project. Uh, and so there's um, there's a potential for an insurance claim on that issue because of the impact on the wall, so that's something that we are uh working through uh with our insurance agent and looking at different types of coverage, since it's not directly related to this project, but i- it it's an excellent point. I'm aware of it, and I understand it ultimately is something that I do want to get taken care of, because as you noted, uh, we obviously want to maintain, and the purpose of this project is to improve the property.
Yeah, thank you.
All right, terrific. Uh, any other questions or comments for Mr. Silverstein? Okay, I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Silverstein.
Thank you all for your service.
All right, do we have a motion?
I'll move to approve this. Uh, I think it's just a wonderful project, really.
Do we have a second?
All second.
And I and I will be recusing myself, obviously.
Oh.
Thank you. Do we have any further discussion? All right, hearing none, and uh Commissioner Burn, uh, you'll you'll, given their recusal of Commissioner Harrison, you'll be, you'll be uh uh, all in favor of uh approving P C resolution number two oh two two seven four seven, uh, signified by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, uh, the resolution is passed five to zero. I congratulations, Mr. Silverstein, good luck with your project. All right, I, let's move on to the next item. There with me for just a second. Moving caper work around. Okay, we are on to item number three. And that is a request for a site plan review to construct a one thousand five hundred and ninety square foot two-story detached pool house in the rear yard of the property located at two five three eight four Prado de la Felicidad, within the residential single-family zoning district. I, Jacqueline, I think you're up again.
Yes, thank you, Madam Chair. Please switch gears and go ahead and share my screen. Okay, good evening again, Commissioners. I'd like to start out by mentioning that this project was noted to or was noticed to all property owners located within five hundred feet of the subject site. The notice was also posted on the city's website and throughout the city at all required locations. Staff did not receive any public correspondence in regards to this project. Again, this is a request for a site plan review to construct a one thousand five hundred and ninety square foot two-story detached pool house in the rear yard of the property located at two five three eight four Prado de la Felicidad, the the residential single-family zoning district. So here we have a location map. The subject site is located in the R S zone, and it is within the estate lots of the Oaks H O A, so outlined in green, here is the subject site. The site is surrounded by the Santa Monica Mountains to the west and by existing single-family residences to the northeast and to the southeast. Lost Virginus Road is located approximately one point three miles west of the subject site right here, and the yellow overlay scene here is the scenic corridor overlay zone. Additionally, here noted in orange, this is the significant ridge line that runs through the front of the property. Because the area of construction is more than fifty feet away from the mapped significant ridge line, it's actually about three hundred and fifty feet away. Um, it is outside of that ridge line protection area, and there's no variance required for the scope of work. So this is a little bit of a closer view of the subject site. The estate lots, lots of the Oaks H O A are made up of custom homes, and the properties in the vicinity range in size from forty-four thousand square feet to one thousand three hundred, I'm sorry, one hundred thirty-seven thousand square feet. The subject site is on the higher end at one hundred and thirty-seven thousand square feet. So the residences in the area also range in size from six thousand nine hundred and twenty square feet to about sixteen thousand square feet. The average F A R for the area is zero point one seven. So the subject site is currently developed with an existing two-story single-family residence, as well as exterior improvements such as a tennis court, a pool, a uh outdoor patio cover and kitchen area right here, um, as well as landscape and hardscape. The lot is a primarily flat lot that slopes upwards at the rear of the property, this area right here um, at this existing berm. So because this property is considered one of the view lots um per the uh agreement between the M R C A and the city back in two thousand and four, this berm at the rear here was installed in order to screen the residence and proposed improvements of view from Malibu State Park below. Here you can see uh photographs of the subject site. This is the front of the residences viewed from the street, and these are two views of the rear, the back of the property. The existing residence is a two-story eleven thousand one hundred and twenty-seven square foot single-family residence with a Mediterranean revival architectural style, which includes smooth off-white stucco finish, stone accents, and a Spanish tile roof. Shown in the pictures in the rear yard is the current patio cover right here, shown again right here, which is to be demolished as part of the proposed project, and you can also see in the distance in both pictures the landscaped berm at the rear of the lot right here. And the project proposal includes the construction of a one thousand five hundred and ninety square foot detached pool house in the rear yard of the existing two-story single-family residence. The project also involves demolition of the existing patio cover within the proposed location of the new two-story pool house. And Calabasas Municipal Code Section seventeen point six two point zero two zero requires this project to be reviewed by the Planning Commission. And we have the proposed site plan. Do you want to mention that the slide only shows a partial site plan because of the fact that the property is uh over three acres in size for visibility purposes? I've just cropped it to show the area of work in the rear yard. So the proposed one thousand five hundred and ninety square foot two-story pool house is located right here, shaded in blue in an area that's currently occupied by detached patio cover and outdoor kitchen area, which again is to be demolished as part of the proposed project. Um, the proposed pool house meets all required development standards for the R S zoning district, including height, the proposed height is twenty-six feet. Setbacks, as you can see here, the pool house is over one hundred feet away from the nearest property line. Um, pervious surfaces, the proposed pervious percentage is seventy-nine point eight percent, and site coverage, the proposed site coverage is seven point eleven percent, and I've also tried to show on the slide here an approximation of where that berm area is that will screen the pool house from view. We have the proposed floor plans, this is proposed to be a pool house. So as you can see on the first floor plan, pretty open floor plan, just have a food preparation area right here. This is not considered a full kitchen because there's no cooking surface, we just have a sink and a fridge, and then outside there is an outdoor barbecue that's proposed. This level, there is also a bathroom and a storage area. Then upstairs on the second floor plan, we have a mezzanine level up here and then an outdoor deck area on top of that uh lower level roofs. And here we have the proposed elevations, the proposed detached pool house does have a more modern architectural style than the existing residence does. It's proposed to have a crystal white stucco exterior with a stained wood trim, as well as a parapet roof, and the maximum height will be twenty-six feet. Here we also have a rendering of the proposed pool house. And the project was reviewed by the Architecture Review Panel on June twenty-fourth, twenty twenty-two, and July twenty-second, twenty twenty-two. The subject site is not located within a designated scenic corridor, and there are no city-imposed architectural design standards for the neighborhood. Um, when the Architecture Review Panel reviewed the proposed project, they found that the project is compatible with the aesthetics of the surrounding neighborhood and recommended approval of the project to the Planning Commission. I also want to mention that the A R P's approval was subject to a line of site analysis as viewed from Lost Virginus Road, which the applicant has since worked with staff on completing. And the M R C A has also reviewed and provided approval of the design as proposed. Because of the fact that the property is one of the view lots of the Oaks Estates, it is subject to approval by the Conservancy in regards to height. So the M R C A has reviewed the project and confirmed that the twenty-six foot height pool house will not be visible from the state parkland area below the subject site. This table shows a comparison of homes in the immediate vicinity, which range in size from six thousand nine hundred square feet to sixteen thousand four hundred square feet. The floor air ratio of homes in the vicinity also range from zero point zero nine to zero point zero three, I'm sorry, zero point three three, with the average F A R being zero point one seven. With a proposed pool house, the total size of the res- residence will be twelve thousand seven hundred and seventeen square feet, because the lot size is the largest lot in the vicinity, this will be on the lower end of the F A Rs in the area with a proposed F A R of zero point zero nine. So in addition to the fundamental view lot issue, which was confirmed by the M R C A to not be visible from the state parkland area, the Architecture Review Panel, as I mentioned, had also expressed concern about the visibility of the project from Lost Virginus Road. So this is a photograph of the homes on Prado de la Felicidad, taken approximately one point three miles west of the subject site from along Lost Virginus Road. Subject site is located within the red circle here. Can just barely see the tops of the palm trees that are on top of the berm right there. So the berm at the rear of the lot, while it was installed for the purpose of screening the view lot residences from the uh state parkland below, the berm also does serve to screen the existing two-story home and the existing patio cover at the rear of the lot from view from Lost Virginus. Again, you can just barely see the tops of those trees right there that are on top of the berm. So at this elevation where the photo was taken, Lost Virginus Road is about seven hundred and fifty feet in elevation. From this point, the highest elevation at the top of the berm is about one thousand six hundred and four feet per the survey that was submitted by the applicant. And the location of the proposed pool house is eleven feet lower. So when viewed from this lower angle along Lost Virginus Road, the berm will serve to screen the proposed structure. Moving on to the findings for a site plan review. The proposed site development is compatible in design, appearance, and scale with the existing uses, development, structures, and landscaping for the surrounding area. The site is also adequate in size and shape to accommodate the proposed development features. As such, the subject project complies with all the required findings. So with that, staff concludes that the proposed project will not alter the existing single-family use of the subject site, which is an allowed use in the R S zoning district. The proposed project meets all required development standards, and the proposed project is compatible in design, appearance, and scale with surrounding uses. The A R P also recommended approval of the proposed project, and the project is exempt from sequel review. Lastly, the proposed project meets all required findings for a site plan review. With that, staff recommends that the commission adopt resolution number twenty twenty-two dash seven four eight, approving file number S P R dash twenty twenty-one dash zero two seven. Thank you, and I am available for questions. I also believe that the architect, contractor, and the homeowner, J McGrath, are also in attendance in the audience if you have any questions for them as well.
Thank you, Jacqueline, I'm very it's a very efficient presentation.
Thank you.
I, are there any questions before I open the po- public hearing? Oh, yes, I, okay, we haven't heard from Commissioner Burn tonight, so we'll start with you.
Thank you. I I just wanted to get some clarification about the heights, um. The uh, you know, the elevations on the section are relative elevations, not absolute elevations, and the survey that you gave me was practically illegible because of the size of the drawing uh and and the size of the font. So what I had, my question was, what is the elevation at the top of the berm? And then what is the building pad elevation at the base of the new building?
It should be, I believe it's one thousand six hundred and four feet at the top of the berm, and I believe it's let me see if I can pull it up in here, because it is a little bit difficult to see it in the printed version, so let me see if I can um pull up the plans, and then I can share my screen and see if it's a little bit more legible there.
Okay.
One second to do that.
It would have been a little more helpful if there were sections that weren't cropped right at the end of the building, and that may be a section that extended, you know, through that berm to show the relationship between the height of the berm uh and the height of the building would have been a little more helpful. So that's the only, that's the only question I have about this. Um, the only other comment I have is that um yeah, the building, the closer you get to the toe of the slope, the less visible the building would be, so from the adjacent state park land, directly adjacent, it's not going to be visible as you go away, as example, for you go over to Lost Hills Road, where you'll actually be able to see quite a bit more of the buildings based on the fact that you're farther away and actually probably a little higher in elevation too, so. That was my only issues or concern about um, about this.
Okay, is this a little bit easier to see?
Yeah, that's better.
Yeah, zooming in on the PDF is typically a little, little better to see, so we have um one thousand six hundred and four elevation, this is the top of the berm area right here, and then.
So fifteen ninety looks like the pad elevation roughly?
Yeah, it's about fifteen ninety or fifteen eighty-nine in the area where that existing patio cover is located.
So the top of the building will extend a little bit above the the elevation of the berm?
Yes.
Um, not substantially and probably not enough really to be much of an issue, that was my question, um. So thank you for clarifying that.
All right, Commissioner Washburn? Uh, you're you're muted.
Uh, I have a question about a a title that's on page uh three of the staff report, and it's in the middle, and um I'm actually kind of surprised, it's it's that Santa Monica Mountains Authority versus the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy? And a lot of the uh the correspondence has been held with the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority, which is an arm of the Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy.
You are correct, Commissioner Washburn, that should be Santa Monica Mountains.
Is there a name changer, or did we just call it something else?
M M R C A is the authority, so they are Mountains Restoration Conservation Authority, but then Santa Monica Mountains is Santa Monica Mountains Conservancy. So you're correct, that should be Conservancy.
Well, then let's just, if since it says Santa Monica Mountains Authority, I don't want to give them any more credence than I have to. Sorry, we we argued long and hard over all of these ridge line homes that were up there um, when the council was dealing with this initial development, so. Um, the second thing is that um, I'm wondering if our lighting ordinance needs to be uh revised to some degree, because if I own that house and that pool house. Because if I own that house and that pool house and I love that deck. And it's a great view of the Santa Monica Mountains. If there's a party out there, there's going to be light that's visible. And it might be worth asking the owner to make sure that they're sensitive to the issues of visibility of those lights. If you go back to slide three in your presentation, Jaclyn.
Let me go ahead and go back to the PowerPoint. Right here.
Yeah, that's it. That shows the lot, obviously, the project site, but two lots to the north. Or, you know, to the top of the aerial map. That is a water district pond for water management and water supply, I believe. And I think that the light that's there, which probably is needed, is visible as you're driving down the one on one freeway. Or maybe ten or twenty seconds as you're driving on the freeway. And my concern would be that if there is a, you know, there is a fate, you know, or festivities on this property. And it's on the balcony or the deck. It would be nice, without having to make an ordinance of any kind or change the ordinance, to just ask that the owner of the property consider what the impact of whatever lighting might be put onto that party deck. When it comes to dealing with the visibility of that site from, not just Lost Virginus Road, but the one on one freeway and Gura Road as well. Because that ridgeline is beautiful when it's dark. The water district might actually have to do what they do with that light. But even they might, you know, alter or shelter or shield the light that's on their property. In order to deal with the light effect that probably will be voiced by some of our constituents on the west side of Calabasas.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Harrison.
Oh, thank you, I've got a number of questions, it's hard for me to understand these drawings. There's no shower in the bathroom, I guess that's my first question, it's just a toilet and a sink?
I believe so, as far as I understand from what they're proposing.
And there's, it's just wide open at the bottom, there's no door to enter the pool house, it seems to be wide open. Is that correct?
I believe they have a folding door, let me get to that, to that slide. And we also do have the architect here to answer any questions about.
Okay, yeah, maybe they can answer, yeah.
Okay, are you talking about this area?
Yes, it seems to be open.
I believe it is a, and maybe we can see this on the elevations, a folding door.
That, I mean, I can't tell that that's a folding door, so I guess the architect will have to let us know. Because I'm concerned if it's just left open like that, animals will get in there. And there's no stove or no dishwasher in the, in the non-food prep kitchen with the big island and counters.
Correct, it would be more of a wet bar if there were to be a kitchen located within the pool house, then it would be considered a second dwelling unit. So the most you can have is essentially a wet bar area with no area to cook food, just a food preparation, so like a sink and a fridge. Similar to what you would have for a wet bar.
Okay, the box on the roof said it was, looks like it's for a, an eight, you know, a heating ventilation, you know, ventilation, air conditioning system. That's going to be important to me to find out if they have that. And they have no door, you know, if it's just open to have air conditioning or heating doesn't make any sense to me.
Yeah, they. I, I believe it's an enclosed space, but the architect could also answer that.
Okay, and I guess I'll ask the architect also why there are even two stories. I mean, to have this great big two story room, because it's open basically. With windows that don't open or close on the top, it's just going to be a big greenhouse. It's going to get really hot in there and I don't understand that when they have a, I can understand the rooftop deck, so they have a view, but they could do that with a one story. That's, so I guess I have those, those questions. I'm also concerned about the style because I don't see how, I didn't see in the minutes where the ARP thought this was compatible with anything. I don't think this is compatible with this house or anything in the Oaks period. Or even in Calabasas Park, it isn't compatible at all. So, I mean, to me, but anyway, I guess I have questions then for the, for the architect when we get there. Thank you.
All right. Why don't we go ahead and open the public hearing? Oh, Commissioner Leah, yes.
Most of my questions have been answered, but I have, I have one. Is there any potential impact to the privacy of adjoining houses from the second story?
Let me go to the, okay, let's see. The project site slide. Okay, so if we look here, I don't have a scale unfortunately on this slide here. But I would say it's about maybe three hundred feet to the nearest residence. So I would say at that distance, there's likely to be no impact from the proposed second story.
What about the view though, three hundred feet can be adjusted with binoculars, what have you? Has this been raised?
With the applicant?
With the neighbors.
They did all receive a public hearing notice in the mail and we did not receive any public correspondence from the neighbors. So no concerns were raised with staff.
All right, thank you.
All right. I, now let's open the public hearing and it sounds like, well, let's see who has their hand raised. I think that admitting the architect would be the most. The most productive start to the public hearing.
We have two hands that are raised right now, Mr. Michael Lancy and Jay McGrath. And also Alon Cohen, Jaclyn, do you know which one may be the architect?
Yes, the architect is Michael Lancy, Alon is the contractor and Jay McGrath is the homeowner.
Okay, so you want me to start with Mr. Lancy?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay.
Hi, my name is Mike Lancy, I'm the architect for the project, can you hear me? Yep.
Yes.
Okay, good deal, yeah.
Please, please, you stated your name, thank you very much, please state your city of residence for the record.
It's Glendora, California.
Thank you.
You betcha.
Do you have, do you have a statement or are you here to answer questions?
Just to answer the questions, Jaclyn has done a great job and I appreciate all of her tremendous work and help on this. She is correct, as regards to the door, it is a folding door. I won't even go so far as to say it's an accordion door, it's a very high end door. The intent is, the purpose is to have that whole corner be able to open up to the pool. So that the owner can enjoy those amenities. And then of course, in the evening and when they're done with the space, to be able to completely enclose that. As far as the height and the, the purpose of that was that the owner themselves, they wanted that element of design to be considered with the included sensitivity to try to get a balance so that we could have a view for that site. And yet not over, you know, not have it larger or higher than it needed to be in order to basically see over the berm. And then as far as the design aspect of it, the sensitivity with the environment of the envelope itself has been considered. And, you know, that's going to be a dual glazed system, obviously, for all of the glazing that is there. And that's been, that's been factored into the construction documents.
Okay. Missioners, you have any, any questions? Commissioner Harrison.
Oh yeah, I still have a question, Mr. Lancy, is there going to be, there's no shower, no stove, no dishwasher?
No, there isn't because it's, it's strictly a pool house. The use of it is not for anything other than, you know, just the enjoyment of the family, you know, on, for the pool, you know, facilities. And to have, you know, toilet facilities there obviously for, for that aspect of it, but there's no, there's no showering or anything. The kitchen facilities were minimized to, you know, to stay compatible with the use ultimately of it. So we have the cooking facilities on the outside and then the inside amenities there are just simply for enjoyment of eating. Because as parties are, as they, you know, as they develop, you know, there's people that want to be inside, there's people on the outside, there's people that want to be by the pool, you know, up on the, on the deck enjoying the view. It, it kind of gives all kinds of options to, you know, to their guests. And, you know, and to the owners themselves, you know, as far as what, what, what view that they want to actually enjoy at the moment.
I know, I know, but look for, I mean, for four hundred dollars a foot or whatever it is, six hundred and eighty eight thousand dollars, you'd think you'd want a shower for people going to the pool. So I'm surprised about that, I do think you could probably add a dishwasher or stove and no one would know. I'm not sure why it's two stories instead of it's just a deck on top. Can you explain why it can't just be that?
It was, it was a direct request from the owner, so it might be best if they address that question directly, quite honestly. Because that was something that was part of their scope of work and so that was.
I mean, who's going to clean those windows up, you know, the second story windows? I, I don't understand, I really, it's hard for me to understand this, so maybe they can explain.
Yeah, I would leave that to the owners to, you know, to explain that.
All right, thank you.
All right, Commissioner Mueller.
Yes, thank you very briefly, Mr. Lancy, the deck off of the second story of the new pool house is facing west, is that correct?
That is correct.
And so it's looking basically toward those two, the berm and those two palm trees?
That is correct.
And if you're standing on the deck, are you seeing berm or are you seeing over the berm?
Over the berm.
And, and yet, if you're down on Los Virginas, it's been described before, you don't see this pool house at all.
Uh, I would say no, because, because of the distance and because of the angle, the viewing angle. It would be difficult at best.
Okay, so it sounds like this is really candidly quite a bit more than just a pool house. This is, you don't have a huge deck like that. For just a pool house, it's to, as you, I think you pointed out, to enjoy the view and probably some chairs and stuff up there. So it's a, this is really kind of an entertainment suite. In addition to a pool house, I would admit.
Yeah, I suppose, I mean, definitions are, you know, can be stretched, I guess, as far as architectural definitions. Kind of hard to say where that limit would be, you know, but, but your observation is what is noted.
Yeah, and, and I mean no disrespect, it, the architecture is fine, it's great. But it is very, as Mr. Harrison has pointed out, inconsistent with the house and the other structures. But, and, and maybe Jaclyn can, can talk a little bit about whether we ought to consider something that appears to be architecturally incompatible. Is, is okay if it's in a pool house setting as opposed to part of the, you know, main structure of the house.
Yeah, it was again, a, a direct request from the owner. And, yeah, that was, you know, that was their wishes.
Yeah, no, I understand that, okay. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Right, Commissioner Byrne, questions?
So it looks like we've established that, that the second level of this building is going to extend above the elevation of the berm. Which is going to increase the visibility of this building. And also I'd be concerned about lighting elements on that second level. You know, those will clearly be visible, very visible at night, so I would want to see some kind of provision for not having a bunch of lighting. You know, on the west side of the building, it's going to be directly observable from anything to the west. And, you know, I would also say that, you know, the thing's going to stick out like a sore thumb. It's going to stick out and it's, and it's very, it's a very white looking building, so. I'm, I just don't like the fact that, I don't want there to be light, I don't want to see light from the second level, if at all, if at all possible. That would be why, that would be why.
The lighting on that west elevation is minimal. There's basically two scones on the west elevation that's around the extreme ends of those, of the doors, it's on the upper deck. So it has been minimized. And once again, there was a lot of effort put into the design of this to be very, very sensitive to the, to the visibility. I mean, height is what it is. You know, but it, it was thought, you know, considerably, you know. So I would say that we, we've done a good job of minimizing that impact, at least in my opinion.
Did the ARP make any mention of lighting or provide any guidance on lighting?
There was, I think, Jaclyn, I think there was some comments, I think, and, but it was actually on the pool side. They didn't actually bring up anything on the west side, because again, it was minimal. There's literally only two wall sconces on the west facing elevation at the, at the second or at the mezzanine, what I call the mezzanine level. And that was it, you know, just two lights, that's it, just two lights. And those don't have to be anything of any kind of brilliance. Those are just simply, just providing a minimal, you know, amount of light for safety for the deck.
And it's also going to illuminate the building wall as well, so that, that's, you know, that's just another comment I had, thank you.
If I may interject, I would suggest if the, if the commission is concerned about that, to respond to that concern. There is a condition in here on the resolution, condition number nine, which says all exterior lights are subject to provisions set forth in the lighting ordinance, chapter seventeen point two zero of the Lane Use and Development Code. In general, that does limit lighting to no more than sixty watts. And we have interpreted that to include to specifically mean sixty, the equivalent of sixty incandescent. So if they were to do LEDs, we would limit it to about five to ten LED watts. If the commission wants to add additional language to that condition or another condition to address it, then that would be something that, that the commission could consider. Such as providing shielding to that light so that it's not just either an upglow or just, you know, having an exposed bulb. So that's just one thing to consider, that all, all exterior lighting on the west side of the building shall be shielded.
All right, Commissioner Washburn. You're muted.
Unmuted now, it might be resolved instead of using a traditional sconce approach on the building itself. Would be to put them on the outside railing or in that vicinity, back toward the patio for the, the safety of, of the occupants. And that's what I'm saying is that i- if the owner and the architect are aware that we're concerned about the visibility from, you know, the one on one or Agur Road or from, you know, Bob Leah's house. Because we've been so protective of that ridgeline lighting issue, it's not this owner's or this architect's problem in a sense. Because the community has indicated that dark skies are really important to our community. So maybe the simple answer would be for Mr. Lancy to just see what other tools might be used in order to make sure that there isn't any disruptive light that you're going to see from a distance. And because that ridgeline is so dark, other than for, I think the water district's lighted reservoir up there. I've, I've noticed that reservoir lighting, I believe, instead of it being residential lighting, you know, for the last several years. And I've been meaning to actually bring that up with the general manager of the water district. So it could be that, this is a real simple solution now that we've brought it up, two or three of us are concerned about that very thing.
All right, are there any other questions of Mr. Lancy? Mr. Lancy, it appears that you are the applicant. And so I'm going to ask you if you have reviewed and actually if you've reviewed with the owner the conditions of approval, including the lighting ordinance compliance. Um, and, uh, if you and if the owner are, is prepared to comply with all of those conditions.
I've reviewed them, I have not reviewed them with the owner, uh, but we can. And, um, from looking at it, there's nothing that is, um, extreme. So I would hope that, uh, the owner could, uh, you know, once again, maybe even answer that tonight if they've in fact reviewed it as well. And then we could get that answer to you.
Jeff, the owner is present and his hand is up.
Okay, then, uh, let's, Mr. Lancy, thank you, let's get the owner in here.
Thank you.
I, I believe, I believe you just admitted the contractor.
Okay, I'll fix that. Uh, Mr. McGraw, you should be able to talk now.
Okay, this is Jay McGraw, can you hear me?
There we go, yes. Welcome, Mr. McGraw. Uh, did you, did you hear the question about the conditions of approval?
I, I did, uh, Madam Chair, and I have reviewed the conditions and, uh, and absolutely will comply with them.
Uh, do we have any questions of Mr. McGraw?
I, uh, I, I would definitely be happy to go through some of the previous questions and hopefully alleviate some concern. I, I, I do appreciate the diligence in, in reviewing this and, uh, and making sure that our, our community, um, stays as beautiful and spectacular as, as it is and, uh, which is certainly a, an attribute of all of your, uh, hard work over the years. So thank you for that and, um, and I share, I share some of your concerns, you know, we went to great lengths, uh, to make sure that we could take advantage of the beautiful view, uh, from the property without, uh, without damaging the beauty, looking back at it. So really taking advantage of angles and distance, uh, we've kind of put this, um, pad, this patio right at the level where, you know, in the seat height, we can see the, uh, see the view. Um, but, you know, from driving around and putting up the, uh, the orange reflector and really taking the, the, the pictures and whatnot, uh, did our homework to make sure that we continue to be good neighbors and, and not put an eyesore up on our beautiful ridgeline. Um, as to the, uh, as to the concern with lighting, I mean, it's really, uh, quite frankly, it's a sunset patio. Um, and after that point, uh, you know, the, the, the beautiful stuff to look at is, is then in the front of this structure. Um, and so we don't have any intention of having certainly any bright lights, um, up there on the, uh, on the patio, you know, there would need to be some lights for safety, but I think that the suggestion of putting those on the backside of the railings, uh, kind of an undermount LED tape type of a situation that, uh, just gives enough illumination that nobody trips and nobody gets hurt, uh, really accomplishes our only goal. Cause as I said, once the sun goes down, uh, we're kind of going back and into the other side and, and getting in the pool with the kids again. Um, as to the, as to the question around, uh, why is it a two-story structure? I think that, um, I, I think that ultimately, when you consider the scale of the property, uh, both the improvements in terms of the main house, as well as the size and scale of the tennis court that's next to it, the pool is, is massive, trust me, I, I have to heat it when the, uh, when, when the weather starts getting warm for the kids and, and it's, it's a big pool. Um, currently the, the single structure kind of pergola that's there just doesn't look, um, it doesn't look right. It's not big enough to, to, to really flow with the rest of the property. And so we decided to make it, um, two-story and so that you really enter that, that patio from an inside scenario and, and have the ability to, you know, kind of put some wine in wine glasses in a, in a close proximity to that patio where they stay clean and cool and whatnot. Um, and so really it, it's just that what's there now, that single story doesn't, uh, doesn't quite frankly look right. Um, and again, I, I, I share your concern with the, with the continuity of the architectural style. The, the, the compromise that my wife and I came to is that we'll use all of the same materials in terms of, uh, the, the windows and the way that they are, the, the wood framed windows and the, the color of the stucco and the, the wood and the pergola outside and whatnot. Are all going to, uh, be complimentary of the style of the house, um, and just kind of making it have a bit more of a, um, of a fun aspect in terms of the look and the, a little bit more modern, because it is out from the house. And, and quite frankly, you don't see it from the house and, uh, and you don't see it from any of the neighboring houses either. That's, that's the beauty of this property. Um, and so I think it'll, I think, you know, having lived there for over a decade, I'm comfortable with the continuity of it, I have to see it every day, so certainly sensitive to that. Um, let's see, what else? Uh, definitely you can't see any of my neighbors from there and thus, um, you know, they can't see me, I can't see them. Um, in terms of the dishwasher and the shower and all that, you know, would we like to do that of, you know, perhaps? Uh, but in the interest of, of really following the, uh, the letter of the law as well as the spirit of it, uh, we'd limited it to make sure that it is very clearly a recreational structure that just complements the pool and allows us to barbecue and, and kind of serve it without the, uh, without the bugs coming around. So, um, you know, just, just kind of following the rules is, uh, what's dictating some of these things.
All right, thank you very much. I, do we have any more questions of Mr. McGraw? All right, thank you, Mr. McGraw.
Yeah, and thank you, your consideration, I really appreciate it.
But, do you have any more hands raised, Michael?
There are no other hands raised.
Okay, I, it appears that Mr. Cohen is in as well, um, but without a hand raised, I assume there's no, no request to speak. All right, so I'm going to go ahead and close the public hearing. I, do we have a motion? Do we have some discussion? Did anybody want to make a motion? Uh, Commissioner Washburn?
Yeah, I'll put a motion on the floor for the purpose of discussion. If we can get a second, then at least if there's additional commentary, it's going to be under the expectation that we're going to vote yes or no.
All right, uh, so I assume that motion is to approve?
It's to approve the resolution and the staff recommendation.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Uh, oh, well, I'll second, but I have a, with, with a proposed, uh, change in a condition.
Okay, uh, so we have a motion, we have a second, I, so let's move on to discussion, Commissioner Mueller.
So, um, in light of the discussion and in light of the architects and the, uh, owners' comments that the lighting on the, on the deck of the pool house is really there for, um, safety purposes and that the deck is really, as I heard, more of a enjoy the sunset and after the sun goes down, it's, it's not going to be this, this, uh, party deck. In light of all of that testimony, uh, and in light of, uh, Commissioner Washburn's suggestion, uh, I've got a proposal to amend condition nine, uh, along the following lines, and I'll just read it and then we can, we can parse it, uh, as we need to. That at the end of condition nine, there would be a new sentence that says roughly, any exterior lighting on the west-facing, on, on the west-facing second-story deck uh, of the pool house shall be placed under the railing and shall face east toward the pool house. Uh, now, what I didn't do, you may notice, is limit the lighting to two or three, because I think that the architect and owner have, uh, i- if we do make this change, I guess, I, I guess I'll need, uh, well, they have the right to design that lighting in a way that protects, uh, safety, of course. And, and, and if it's, um, uh, LED, maybe they need more than two to, to have proper safety. And as long as it's facing eastward toward the structure, uh, it shouldn't create a problem, uh, you know, on the west side. So that's the reason that I didn't put in two lights or three lights or nine lights. Um, because I think they need to design carefully, uh, that lighting structure along the rail. So anyway, that's just an idea that I wanted to throw out there as a, as an amendment to the, uh, condition nine.
Maybe we could also, maybe we could also add something about, um, you know, additional review from, you know, the planning department regarding the lighting conditions, uh, approval, uh, discretion, you know, at the discretion of the planning department. Uh, you know, have some other, a little more of a check on what that's going to look like.
So subject to, something like subject to approval of the, um, director of planning and then my condition, something like that?
Yeah, yeah.
And, and what about the interior? I mean, you're talking about the exterior, but the whole interior of the second floor could be ablaze. And is there a way to put some kind of glazing in there that, that doesn't shine light outside of the building? Cause the whole building could be extremely light. From, uh, there are no curtains upstairs, I don't, again, I don't know how they're going to clean the windows, but there's, there's, it's just, uh, it's all glazed, you know?
From a development code standpoint, uh, the answer is no. Our development code regulates lighting on the exterior of the, of the property and of the building. Uh, i- if the commission wants to add that condition, uh, that was, uh, read by Commissioner Mueller, I would, I would actually specify or, or state that there would be no lighting or shall be no lighting on the, on the wall, the exterior wall facing the west on the, uh, west elevation on the deck, just to make it clear that there would be no lighting on that wall. Therefore, any, and then continue on to specify that any, any lighting up there would have to be placed under the rail facing east. Um, I will also note that, uh, Alon Cohen and the property owner have both, both also raised their hand. So as the, as these conversations continue, they may want, may want to open up the public hearing again so that they can, uh, provide additional comments.
Right, thank you. Um, we have any other comments? All right, I'm going to go ahead and reopen the public hearing, uh, let's hear from, uh, let's hear from Mr. McGraw first.
Thank you, Madam Chair, so I, uh, I, I fully understand the spirit of the request and have no resistance to it. You know, we, we don't want, um, we don't want a bright environment to be in. Uh, so it's not like I'm trying to figure out how to accomplish a different objective than, than everybody else is. So, um, I can tell you that, uh, I, I'm not saying that we don't need to, you know, craft it and draft it and, and get words on paper, but just know that I, I fully understand and agree with the concern and the concern is not adverse to my objectives on that patio. And, uh, it, and, and the same goes in, inside. I mean, we're not, you know, we're, we're a dim light household, so it's, um, it, it's, it's not going to be a, a lighthouse up there. But, um, but I do, again, I understand that the spirit of the concern and, and I, and I agree with it and, uh, and intend to comply with it. And just for clarification, I have a window washing service.
Okay, thank you. Madam Chair, may I ask Mr. McGraw a quick question?
Sure.
Mr. McGraw, I thought I heard, and maybe this was from the architect, something about the, the windows would have some sort of glazing that would, and if, if nothing else, you're trying to keep the sun from baking the, uh, the room too much. Uh, so did I understand there is some sort of glazing which will minimize the, the light going in and out of that second story?
That's correct. There, they, they will have a glazing on them and then we typically put a, uh, and, and will here out of necessity, put a, a UV tent with like a five percent that really knocks down the light coming, um, in and out. Uh, just, cause as you say, you can't, you can't climate control it. I, I think somebody, uh, perhaps Commissioner Harrison said it would be just a, a greenhouse in there if, if we're not careful with it. So, um, there, you know, there will be drapes up there, uh, on those windows. There will be a glazing that comes from the manufacturer and there will be a tent that's, that's applied after, again, just out of, of practicality and necessity.
Thank you.
I, I also, I, I also do believe strongly based on having gone down and, and looked with a pair of binoculars for the orange strike plate, that based on the angle and the setback and the berm, um, that it's not going to be an issue. And, and again, I, you know, this is my, Calabasas is my home, I, I don't want to be that guy. So, you know, we, we, we're not just trying to follow the, the letter of the rules, but, but the spirit of the community as well.
All right, thank you. Um, is, uh, is Mr. Cohen's hand still raised?
Yes, as, as well as the architects.
Okay, uh, we haven't heard from Mr. Mr. Cohen, why don't we let him in? Let's hear from him. Welcome, Mr. Cohen, uh, if you would please state your, state your name and city of residence, please. Are you there?
Hello?
Uh, there we go.
Oh, can you hear me?
Yes.
Can hear you now.
Hi, I'll state my name and, uh, place of residency, so, uh, my name is Alon Cohen, um, in the Woodland Hills. And we are in charge and working in cooperation with, uh, Michael Lancy and Jay McGraw to, uh, put this project to life. I'm here and I'm listening and, uh, of course, accepting, um, all the requirements from the committee. We will follow and comply with, of course, all the, uh, restrictions and demands that we have to comply with. In regards, one thing I would like to address as a solution for the lighting and of course, uh, this, the safety that we have to, uh, put on the second-story balcony. Uh, the solution I had in mind, of course, is, uh, running a strip light across the railing of the second story, of course, from the inner side of the balcony, um, that will provide illumination and, um, basically I hope will comply with, uh, your demands. And that will be my, um, interpretation and comments. If you have any questions for me, please feel free.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Cohen? Uh, and you know, uh, if you had a hand up before and, and you don't have any questions right now, please, please take your raised hand down. It's hard to keep, hard to keep track. Uh, Commissioner Washburn, did you have a question?
Uh, you know, actually, what I wanted to do was, uh, accept the modification or the intent of the modification of Commissioner Mueller and, um, and, and add to the.
Commissioner Washburn, I would just suggest, this sounds like we're moving into kind of motion territory. So I, I'd suggest we, we close the public comment first, the period, if that's where we intend, if we go to intend to go back to deliberations.
I guess we need to close the public hearing first.
Well, but we, we, we still have, I believe we still have the, uh, the architect to hear, uh, the architect to hear from. So before we close the, the public hearing, uh, Michael, is, is the architect still looking to speak? Is his hand still raised?
Yes, the architect just put his hand down.
Okay, uh, why don't we go ahead and admit him?
All right, and what I'm going to do is, okay, everyone else put their hand down, perfect, all right, I will let the architect talk.
I'll just make this very brief, I just wanted to, uh, support Mr. McGraw's statement, uh, with the technical side of the lighting for the inside of the building. That's all going to be, uh, an indirect, uh, downlighting. And so, um, I can assure the board that, uh, the lighting for the inside of the building is very, very, very subtle. Uh, in the, in the, in the fact that the, uh, the light spread is actually directed downward. There is no, uh, there is no lighting that actually is, um, you know, because it's recessed into the ceiling element. And so there is no direct lighting, so it's going to be a very, very subtle night view. So that's it, I just wanted to, to, uh, support that.
All right, thank you very much. All right, uh, I am going to go ahead and close the public hearing. Uh, and I, I'd like to give this a shot in terms of wordsmithing and let's see if it meets what you're looking for, Commissioner Mueller, and if it meets what you're, you're looking to, uh, uh, put forth, uh, as a motion, Commissioner Washburn, uh, item number nine, uh, in the. uh in the conditions would be all exterior lights are subject to the provisions set forth in the Lighting Ordinance, Chapter seventeen point two of the Land Use and Development Code. There shall be no lighting on the exterior of the west wall. Any exterior lighting on the west-facing second-story deck shall be placed under the railing and shall face eastward towards the structure. Does that do it?
Uh, with the addition of the uh Commissioner uh Burns' comment that, and I've, we've done this a million times before, subject to approval of the Director of Planning.
Okay, now, if if all right, I just wanted to make sure that 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 condition is still with the specificity of the language we're putting in here.
Yes, yes, yes.
Condition rather than leaving it to building and safety.
Uh, well, the the language is fine with me. It, and I heard Mr. Cohen talk about some sort of strip lighting, which makes sense. So that's not limiting it to two or five or ten. I don't know how those work. Uh, there, there was one issue, though, about your language, which I think said on the si- on the west-facing we want to limit that to the second story. We're not trying to stop them from having lighting on the west wall of the first story.
Okay, so that first sentence should be, there shall be no lighting on the second story on the exterior of this second-story portion of the west wall.
Correct.
I think that that is a a good level of specificity and clarity.
Now, again, again, my question is uh with that level of specificity, uh is there a need to add the additional step of having planning director approval, or is this something that can be, that can be incorporated as it normally is as part of the process with the the with building and safety, with, you know, the the final approvals that are necessary with regard to the plans?
That is, that's a good, that's a good question, and I I don't believe that it needs director level approval because there's not much discretion to that. It's specific enough to indicate that there shall be no lighting on the wall of the second floor that faces west. Any lighting on the second-floor deck will have to be on the rail facing east. All of that's very specific. And as a final, as as the process moves forward, the, before the permits get issued, the plans that get plan-checked through building and safety come back to the planning department. So Jaclyn, for example, will cross-check the final plans and ensure that it meets all of the conditions before the building permit is issued.
So the question is, uh, Commissioner Washburn, it it as it stands, it's your motion. Are you good with the existing language?
I would just, I would just add and accept the language as proposed in the motion that I made. And I'm making that motion again and looking for a second. But you have to close the public hearing first. And then I'll make the motion.
All right. Sounds good. Uh, let's close the public hearing. The public hearing is closed. Go ahead, uh, and
Well, and uh, as I said, I would make the motion with the language and the specificity that we've discussed. And since we have processed at Jaclyn's office and at Michael's office, uh i- if there's any question, you know, they know what we talked about, and the owner and the architect, everybody is in agreement that we're gonna pay attention. So I'm happy with that.
All right. Chair Fosker, can I just hear the second half of that sentence again so that I can make sure I have it down right here?
Uh, so the addition the additional language is there shall be no lighting on the exterior of the on the exterior of the second-story portion of the west wall. And then the second part of that, the second sentence is any exterior lighting on the west-facing second-story deck shall be placed under the railing and shall face eastward towards the structure, the structure.
Thank you. I'm just reading.
You were able to get that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. I I I will second the the motion with the amendment, and I just want to make sure Greg is comfortable knowing that there is an opportunity for Jaclyn and Michael's office to review the final plans before issuing the permit.
Yep, he does have his hand up and was, did you have something further?
I I just wanted to know if 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 something gets built that we're unhappy with, the city has legal recourse to ask them to change it? Yes or no? So if he got the lighting regime that we don't like, does the city have the ability to say, you guys gotta change this up?
Well, is your question that we don't like or that is non-compliant with the language of the condition? Because there can be a difference there.
I'm not sure. I'm not quite sure about that language.
Well, there's two things that they that e- every property owner is subject to in this, well, not everybody, in this particular case. Number one, they're subject to our municipal code and the lighting section in general. And number two, they are subject to the conditions that are imposed on them for this project. So that's why we're trying to get to a a level of specificity that the commission is comfortable with, because we will be able to hold them to that. However, for example, your point is well taken. If they install the lighting that's consistent with this condition and uh we're unhappy with it down the road, w- we are stuck with that condition, and that's the only thing that we can impose on them, uh unless that lighting also exceed, happens to exceed the municipal code stipulations.
And Commissioner Burn, if I could also add on to your point, um, that we will go out for final inspection once it is built. So, for example, if I go out for the final inspection, we see lighting installed on the western wall and not underneath the railing directed towards the structure, then, for example, we wouldn't sign off on the final inspection until it's revised to meet, to ensure that it meets meets the conditions of approval.
And what if you see light uh lights installed one foot away from the western wall on either side? Which are clearly visible, you know, then what?
Do we want to expand upon the condition? But a- at that point, it it would um it it sounds like it would comply with the condition as we've written it. If they do that, however, um, it would still have to comply with Chapter seventeen point twenty, which does mean like downward-facing lighting.
Well, I mean, Michael, are you worried like about a lamp or something?
Yeah, so if they put a sconce, as he was mentioning, as the architect was mentioning, just on either side of the western wall, that
The corner.
Uh, the corner, that kind of defeats the purpose of, uh, you know, so there has to be some footage uh on the, on the going north or whatever direction that is, east.
Point is well taken. Uh, on, looking at the plans, I don't see anywhere else on the building where they're showing exterior lighting over the the first floor.
Right, but if they, if they can't put them on the western wall, they may put them on the sidewalls, uh, so.
We we really, I'm sorry to interrupt, Madam Chair, we really have them coming and going because they can't put it on the western wall and they can only put them on the railing. That's why, you know, that's why I crafted this thing initially was they can only put them on the railing, and you don't have to therefore have exclusions, but I don't have any problem. I I think we've got them both ways. They can't put it on the west wall, and they can only put them under the railing.
Yep. I would tend
Well, it doesn't prohibit lighting, though, on on the, on the north or south wall. So if it's
That's true.
So if it's just a foot away, it's still, so there there should be some feet where they can't put it too close to the western wall.
I don't, yeah.
But I don't know how, I don't know what the distance is.
We also have the testimony of the owner that he understands the spirit and content of the conditions. If, and and that is, it is his expressed desire to comply not only with the letter of the law, but with the spirit of the law. And I would be shocked, he sounds like a pretty honest guy, and he, I'd be shocked if he tried to pull a fast one and put a bunch of bright lights on the north and the south of the second story. I think we've got a pretty clear and specific limitation here, frankly.
All right. Well, we have a motion on the floor and a second. I I'm gonna call this to the vote, to a vote.
Did we close the public hearing?
Yes, yes, we, yeah. Yes, I did. I, all in favor of the motion, I, as as it was revised, I signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
I'm opposed. I I regardless of whether this is really a poolhouse, which it isn't, because it doesn't even have a shower, it's certainly not compatible in any way with the architecture of the house or the neighborhood. And we can't, I can't get over that. I have a friend who has a a house of a similar size in Holby Hills, same style, built in the thirties, actually. He has a beautiful poolhouse that matches the house. I can't imagine that anybody could say that this is compatible in any way with the house, with the style of the house. But so, so that's why I'm opposed.
All right. The uh the resolution passes with a vote of four to one. And uh congratulations to, to the applicant and to the owner. And let us move on. We are at uh the director's report.
Thank you. I just want to update the commission that uh we have continued working on the safety and the circulation element. And uh we've made continued revisions based off of our uh comments and conversations that we've had with the commissioners. Um, our plan now, and and we've actually submitted a draft with the updated comments. We we've submitted a draft to uh CAL FIRE for their review and comments, and we've also engaged conversations with CAL OES as well, Office of Emergency Management. And um so we're just waiting for for feedback from both those agencies as we continue to refine that document. We do anticipate bringing it back to the commission uh in the second meeting of January. So that's our anticipated uh timeline. With that, I just wanna remind the commission that this is the last meeting of the year, so happy, happy New Year, happy holidays. I hope everyone has a fun, healthy and and happy holiday season.
Well, you don't get away quite that fast. Is there, are we tracking anything for the January fifth meeting?
Uh, no, not at the moment.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any reports from any of the commissioners? Nope. Okay. Uh, so we are going to adjourn, well, at the moment, it's to the regular meeting uh of January fifth of two thousand twenty-three and and we'll see if uh we'll see if that remains on calendar. Wish everybody a very happy and healthy holiday season. Please stay safe. There's a lot of, a lot of stuff going on out there right now. Uh, do we have a motion to adjourn?
Still moved.
And there's a second, I'm sure, sure, somewhere. Thank you, Commissioner Harrison. I, all right, I I'm sure we are all in favor, and so we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Thank you. Happy holidays.
Thank you.